Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us on the December 9th, 2021 Strategic Planning Committee. This is a subcommittee of the Raleigh Planning Commission. In this committee, we discuss topics that are of interest to the community and to the Planning Commission in particular as it relates to rezoning and development activities. In this particular session, we will be talking about essentially how housing makes its way through the Planning Department. And then we have a panelist of housing developers who are here to answer all of our questions that we've had along the way, talk about specific sites, what we can do to be more supportive or be more or educate ourselves into the review process for housing developments. So with that, our first presenter is from the city of Raleigh. James Marapotti is a planning supervisor with the City of Raleigh Planning and Development Department. He's worked for the city for 21 years with experience in plants, reviews, parks, and parks planning. He currently manages the project advisory section in the Planning Department. The project advocacy group manages critical project schedules for public and private development that are under review and under construction. Their work also looks at process improvement initiatives for the department. James, thank you for coming and speaking with us today.
Hey, thank you very much, everyone. Is my video, am I pretty clear? Okay, awesome. Hey, thank you, everyone. And again, my name is James Marapotti from Planning and Development. And I was notified that there was an interest by the Strategic Planning Committee to get an update, understand what planning development is currently doing to reduce barriers and increase production of housing. I first want to start out going over briefly with the city's strategic plan. If the, there it is, just kind of paint the big picture and see what we're doing right now, how it fits into and nested with the city's goals. So it was adopted with City Council, October 2020. It's basically an outline and a plan for the city's goals. It's got various different kinds of input means. It's focused results that are accountable. It is managed by senior leadership with the city manager at the helm and has six key focus areas, as you can see outlined below. And the one that's in yellow is the one I want to touch on and go through the next slide, please. So we're a safe, vibrant, healthy community. What is that? It's a city initiative that's being managed right now. What holds this SVHC 2.6 initiative is nested within that. The primary goal for 2.6 is streamlining city development review processes and to reduce all barriers to produce production of housing for all. And I want to underline housing for all. We're looking at equity means and methods to make sure that, A, the cost, the timing, the understandability of it is very simple for anyone across the board. So that's kind of the sub-goals. I want to highlight there, myself and Pat Young are working on these areas right here. We want to focus on is affordable housing, review type, emergencies like due to fire, and then city economically focused areas. So looking to develop certain review types for those kind of focused review types. And number two is like when we find something and it makes sense and we have the means and the resources, we want to improve, you know, implement it now versus a, you know, one time deployment later on. So we're working on processes and implementing things as we see right now we can do. Next slide, please. So I wanted to go over and just look at what we've been doing thus far with this milestone and who's it composed of. It's a team leads of three city employees, myself, William, and Kelly, different departments. Good to have different kinds of viewpoints coming in. And we also want to look at the composition of the team that supports this initiative. And we wanted to make sure it's balanced the best we could with city staff that are subject matter experts. And we looked at 13 external partners, starting from residents. We got designers, we got consultants. I think one or two might be on the Planning Commission also that are part of this team effort that we've been exploring since kicking off back in April of 2021. We went through a discovery phase that I'll go through all that. And then currently, right now, we're in the recommendations assessment phase. And then I want to really highlight the last piece is implementation and management. Again, if we can implement anything now, we are planning to do it. A deliberate implementation plan is resourced and managed. Our plan is to start in April. And the intent there is to have quarterly updates once we start kicking this thing off too, to ensure that it's resource for success. Next slide, please. So I want to kind of go over, you know, from left to right, you know, what is the whole adventure going through planning development for a project? I want to stress that, you know, you can see the intake was in the red area going all the way to CO. That means it's constructed with a certificate of occupancy. These are some of the major review type services. Not every project goes through all of these. Some go through all the way from rezoning all the way through the back end. Also want you to look down below where it has parentheses. That's the current rough time it takes to go through each one of these different review type services. I also want to say that our team was focusing, if you look at just that rezoning or, you know, any of those areas, big boxes, we looked at three aspects. What's the intake aspect, relationship between the applicant in the city, the routing and review aspect, and then the backend, the closeout? What are those, those three major areas that are consistently across each one of those areas? We were kind of evaluating all that with that whole composite of the team there. Next, please. So I just want to just go through that discovery phase. That's the one we just completed and that was from April till now. And again, just kind of reiterating, those are the areas we saw as key focus areas, the intake, routing, reviews, and closeout for all those areas. Again, the three that are on my team there, the city staff, we learned soon like, hey, we can't do this all by ourselves. So that's where we really sat down and thought it out. How do we find that right balance of trying to incorporate all the feedback from residents, you know, consultants, contractors, designers, attorneys? We wanted to have a good mixture of all that team composition to really dive in there. We had very aggressive meetings every week where they would go out and explore these areas and report back what they found, looking at different kinds of our websites, our processes, our key metrics. So it was, you know, like I said, it was very ambitious and I think we gained a lot through this exercise. Right now, each one of the teams that were breaking out, each one of those, those big boxes you saw have developed preliminary, short term and long term recommendations for each of those. Next, please. Next slide. So right here is where we're at in progress. And just like I said, got a whole bunch of information that has been given to us and we're trying to digest it all and try to formulate what we can do now. And, you know, what are we resourced to do right now with the funding and the manpower? So I want to center some attention on the front end assistance piece, the single family development permits piece, and the new affordable housing review type. Those are the three that I plan to go into on the next slide. As you can see, there's a lot of TBD to be developed. Excuse me. So like I said, I'm going through this right now with my teammates and we're kind of compiling this down. But next slide, please. These are three I want, we're working on right now. So we see a lot of input from customers, you know, good, bad, and ugly stuff. But we found that these three areas right now, we have the ways and means to work on these three areas, the single family development permits. So basically what we've learned is that customers are frustrated because, you know, the applicants or residents, they just can't submit their plans right straight into our intergov, which is our review software. They have to send it into a general email box. Sometimes it gets lost in space there, back and forth, back and forth between staff and the applicant, a lot of, a lot of effort and frustration we've, we've been seeing and reporting on that. So we're going to spend a lot, we spend a lot of focus on this area right now so you can have direct submissions right into intergov bypassing this inbox. So as you can see, we just started doing some testing right now, November through December with contractors and do some pilots and see if it's working out. A lot of positive we've heard right now, there's some areas that we need to work on. But we're, we've seen the proof of concept is working out with this. January, we plan to open it up to everyone else, you know, making sure we work out all the bugs. And then we want to go from single family development to townhomes, open the aperture a little bit more. And then right now, the constraint we're running into is that we want to have this thing full service to, for all review type options. But right now, projecting based on our, our vendor, because, you know, that runs intergov, it's forecasted to 2024 right now because they can support that type of rollout for full self-service. Number two, homeowner, simple permits. Lot of input. And like I said, I focus on the, on my team that was working on this initiative, said it was a lot of frustration on, you know, from residents that, hey, I want to pull some simple stuff like, you know, a fence permit, deck permit, additions. It's just too cumbersome right now, the website, process, the application. So we plan it right now to develop some basic self-help videos, plan to roll that out in February to help it out, help out the homeowners and residents that want simple permits. And because they don't do this for a living and they want to have an easy way to look at something and figure it all out. So that's one of the, the rollouts we're working on right there as well. The last thing I want to talk about is affordable housing, which, you know, is very important to me and to make as a focused effort right here. And I've been working with Larry Jarvis and his staff to develop a unified plan process with housing neighborhoods. And when I say that is that there's a lot of times that when projects were coming into planning development for review, affordable housing, I didn't even know about them until they're in a review and they're, they're having a problem. And that's what my team does. We go in there and help projects if they're having issues anywhere in the process, even into the field. That's our plan is we go there to help them out. We are helping a lot of these affordable housing projects out and like, we've got to have a deliberate plan in place. So I've been working with their staff and now we have a unified plan of, of all projects that are coming in that are CIP funded, affordable housing projects. And I just want to shed a light right there. We have one coming right now, Kings Ridge, in about a week or so, that we're going to test our new process with this Kings Ridge. With the new process we developed so far, we're anticipating about 45 days off the reviews. And I have a backup slide that kind of goes way into the depth of this if someone's interested about the new process and showing what it looks like. And like I said, I've, I've shared that with the consultant that is submitting Kings Ridge and she was extremely happy with what she's seeing right now. Of course, Larry Jarvis and his team has seen it. They like what we've developed so far. So pending any questions, that's my brief update of what's going on and next steps for us. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. I got, so I got the sense maybe, Roberta, had you been working on this one as well? It's part of the, like, I couldn't tell if there was anybody here that was, had worked on this. I know Mac Paul had worked on this as well. And I think that Natalie is on as well and she provided some comments. What were some of like the, I guess groundbreaking concepts that were brought to your attention that, you know, were real, let's, let's tackle this first?
Yeah. The biggest was the front end focus of, you know, the initial intake, the application process, understand how to clearly get these plans submitted in there, save a lot of time. You saw five to seven days on the front end and that, that is a lucky person there. Sometimes it stretches longer, but if we can fix that and make that the most efficient we can apply ourself right there, that focused area, we feel we're going to see a lot of return on investment for the outside and for us as well. Because we only have a limited amount of resources, but we see that's the biggest focus, simplifying the application process and filling it out once and it populates everything throughout the process versus having to start, stop, start, stop all throughout. And it's just a lot of level of effort from their side and our side. It's just, you think we're, we're back in 1980s, the way this process is set up right now. It's, it's so frustrating. I see it. And then we're like trying to say like, where can we hit it with the most bang for the buck? We see the front end as the biggest area right now to concentrate on.
Great, great. Where does the, so as, as a planning commissioner, how do you think that we will be impacted or how can we support in either way, this process? I think this is outside of our process, but it's more to kind of help educate us as to where, you know, our impact is in this timeline.
Well, I think, you know, if staff reaches out, because there's, like I said, we were hitting rezoning aspects as well. There's some areas I see that potential and Travis might be able to expound on that with his staff, ways and means to make it a little more efficient through the rezoning process. Couple of things we're seeing where TIA is too much TIA asking, should we, you know, throttle it back? You know, those are the things we're seeing as well, some, some basic trends throughout the review process. And hopefully staff has some touch points with you guys to, to see where you guys can actually help influence.
And I'm happy to jump in there, James. I appreciate the, the opportunity and the background there. So the strategic plan is largely implemented by administration, administrative staff. So I know James gave you all just a quick overview of what that document is, but it's a very important document for the city. It's something that is reviewed on an annual basis and adopted by the, or affirmed by the city council on a less regular basis. So the, the plan contains a number of different key focus areas. There are six key focus areas. Each has initiatives contained within them. And then there are, there's a very large net that is cast amongst staff members who are either involved in initiatives or serve as subject matter experts on teams. So from the administrative standpoint, the work that, that James's team is doing, I think is, is excellent. And it ties into a conversation that he and I were a part of earlier this morning, just about our permitting process and the, how we could reform that from a global standpoint. So, you know, you ask how, how that could be supported? And I think it's just understanding and acknowledging that staff is working on that effort right now. James mentioned some potential enhancements with, from the rezoning standpoint, and that's something that we are looking at right now. Are there ways that we can make the rezoning process less onerous on affordable housing development projects or applications? And I think that's something that we'll continue to explore. And if there are enhancements or efficiencies that we can make, we'll obviously make the Planning Commission aware of that. But it's, it's something that we'll take care of from what I'll call backup house, if you will.
That's helpful. And then with our panelists that are going to be coming on and helping answer or ask more questions, I think that's a good segue. But wanted to look at Chairman Roberta Fox. Did you have a question?
Yeah, quick question. I don't know Travis, if you want to answer this or if it's James, also hi, James. It's nice to see you.
Hey, Roberta, good to see you again.
If you could really high level explain how conditions are reviewed when a site plan comes in? So what role do they play in the review of a site?
Okay, so conditions of approval for preliminary is what you're talking about?
Conditions from a zoning case.
Oh, okay. Travis, you want, I can tell you how it impacts the review. You want to understand that, you're saying? Okay, so for any project that comes in that has rezoning conditions, it's on the front cover of all the plan sheets so that all staff can read and understand what impacts or certain lanes of conditions. So we have various different trades that are reviewing it, you know, stormwater, public utilities, urban forestry, various trades are looking through those conditions, seeing anything is pertinent to their review realm. So from a preliminary standpoint, if you're establishing a new use, they're going to look at those conditions and see if, hey, did you preserve all these trees in this front area? You know, the setbacks are greater because we're increasing your density, whatever it might be. Those are things that apply through the preliminary aspect. It potentially all the way through to CO in the field where the inspector needs to see that same condition from the beginning to the end is actually in place. So it does have purpose and meaning all the way through the review process. Okay? Hope I helped a little bit with that.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear. I don't, I don't know if it's broadly understood. Every time we make a condition, it's like we've amended the code just for the purpose of this parcel, for the purpose of a particular development plan going through. So it becomes part of the review process.
Correct.
Every time there's a condition, it means that there's a person that needs to then follow up on it.
Right.
As well.
All the way through to the field to make sure it's in place that way.
Commissioner Bennett. Thank you. I was trying to think of something intelligent sounding to ask. I think in light of what Roberta just said, so that to me seems like it's even more important that the applicants are engaging with the communities in the development of the plan to ensure that they're incorporating what needs to be incorporated. So it doesn't then come to us and get a whole bunch of conditions tacked onto it. And I think that could also create more efficiencies in the process. Yes?
I was gonna, I was gonna add to what you were saying. I think one other way to think about it too is if we see the same thing come in over and over again, should that not be codified versus making it a condition that's just for this parcel when we know that that, that particular circumstance happens more often than that? Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. And that's something that, that we, I'm sorry to interrupt, Commissioner Bennett.
That's okay.
Yeah, that, that's something that staff keeps an eye on. And so when we continue to get the same type of conditions, our first reaction is to write a standard template that everyone can use. And then we use that template to then amend the unified development ordinance.
Sorry, I was just going to say, I think that also could address a concern I've expressed sometimes about the inequities in conditions. And we see some cases in certain parts of town that have a laundry list of conditions and then some other ones that don't. And it, it takes the burden a little bit off of the community to even understand what they need to be asking for. So to the extent that you can codify it, when you see it happening a lot, it, it takes away that inequity. So I think that's, that's great. This is, this is really good. Is this process on or going to be on the, your web, website? So the public can see it as well and understand it?
Yes, I need to talk with my director about the outreach and the, you know, what are we going to do to communicate what we're doing right now to the general public and make sure they understand, like I said, that homeowner resident component piece, you know, it's, it's too, the equity of that is too complicated. We've got to simplify it and find those outreach opportunities to really get to them and incorporate them into what we're doing, our processes. Does it make sense to them or not? Stop if it's not making sense and go backwards. That's what we need to get back down to, the simple.
Thanks.
This was really helpful, really informative. And I didn't, I didn't realize, I appreciated also that chart that shows the timeline through certificate of occupancy to show kind of what the, how laborious it is to go through the process. But then, you know, the efforts that are being taken by the city to really evaluate this. I will say on a personal level, since I've joined the Planning Commission, you know, there's been a number of changes that I've just been so positive and just to kind of give credit to the Planning Department for, for all of that, including tenant notifications when rezoning is happening at apartment communities. I've seen that all over town. I think that's really great. Also, our equity section in our review booklets has been huge. And so I, I just really commend the city for, for these proactive measures. In that, we have a number of panelists that are going to be coming on your screen. It may be somewhat overwhelming, but a part of the, the intention of this is to have an open dialogue about the process. You're going to be seeing here and hearing from folks who are boots on the ground, who have actually done a lot of this work. We have Natalie Brett, who's head of development at DHIC. We have Jess Brandis, who's head of development at CASA. We have Jennifer Paul, who's head of development at Families Together. And then we have Mac Paul, who is with Morningstar Law Group, whom I know we've seen a number of times, but he's able to kind of articulate some of the feedback of going through the rezoning process. And then you have seen Erica Brown with Triangle J Council of Governments. So all of this is open discussion to talk about what we had just heard, also experiences that we've had. We did have a pre-meeting, so we've kind of have some stories and some experiences that we can bring to the conversation pretty readily. But I guess we can start off, Natalie, not to put you on the spot, but with some of this, we had talked about some of the opportunities that you had to express kind of the process of going through the planning and design review phase. Did any of the presentation help today? And, and do you have any feedback or thoughts from your experiences?
Yeah, I think, yeah, my team and our typical design consultants have given suggestions to housing and neighborhoods and to James group before. And so it was nice to hear a bit of the update. Because when I kind of saw that calendar of the typical timeframes and the last rezoning we did took 14 months, that was no, that was way greater than three to six months. But I will say that that was back when the CACs were still around and I think we were there like four different times. So I know that was part of the process there that I think took a lot longer than maybe things do now. But I think anything we can do to shorten any of the timeframes, I mean, that was kind of one of our suggestions too, was to have more of a highlighted type of approval process for affordable housing that somehow not getting around rules, but just shortening the review times, it's, it's just a major, major help. A lot of the things that we do have tight timelines and it's not just because we want to get them done quicker, but it's literally related to the type of financing that we use. And I know, you know, development service probably hears that from everybody, like it's, you know, we have to close by this date because of X, Y, and Z. But we have some regulatory requirements that make it, you know, a, a real fact in our case a lot of the time. But yeah, I appreciate any kind of efforts just to focus in. And since they are, affordable housing is a priority for the city, anything you can do to help shorten the timeframes is great. And, you know, we had some other suggestions that weren't necessarily all development services related, things regarding sureties and, for example, public infrastructure and stormwater, things like that, that we always have to go put an agreement in place. It has to be recorded as well as actually get sureties from insurance companies. And that whole process can take way, a really long time, and especially on projects that have housing and neighborhoods, you know, loans in place. I mean, that really is a way that not only through the certificate of occupancy, but through the city always holds back a percentage of their loan funds until the project is complete. So if we don't do the public road like we were supposed to, one, we wouldn't get our CO. And then two, we have the city loan at, you know, the city has a partner. So anything we can do to reduce paperwork, timeframes, expense, because there's a cost to getting these bonds in place, like any, there's a long list of things that would make it easier. But, you know, starting with the development process that, you know, James is working on is really nice to hear.
No, it's good to hear, Natalie. And Natalie, I do have a backup slide that kind of paints a picture. I just got it finalized Friday, last Friday. If you want to see it briefly, if you got, because Carmen has it to show you, or I can send it to you later. So there we can see that this is our first proof of concept going out. We're going to test with Kings Ridge with CASA and see how it works out. And if we have problems, we're there to make adjustments to it. But here it is, it's, you know, for City Raleigh Affordable Housing Projects that are through Housing and Neighborhoods. Project advocacy team will manage the intake and schedule all the meetings in coordination. And then we plan to have, you know, a free internal sketch on the front end for all those that come in. And these are kind of speed up things right here. We're going to have triage and inputted the same day or next day as a affordable housing type. So it's queued in and intergov and all the reviewers. as a affordable housing type. So it's queued in and intergov and all the reviewers are aware of this affordable housing new review type and to put that on expedited aspect to it through reviews. Now, if it's coming in by a city PM, city PM, the review fees will be all waived, which is an awesome thing for those that are applicable for those. The first review will be the standard timeframe. Then after the first review, we have a mandatory 30-minute teams huddle with the applicant and everybody in a room, you know, on a team's room and go over those comments, either the first or second review, to kind of work things out on the front end. Subsequent reviews will reverse all those business benchmarks by five days as you can read through there. And that's a lot to, to compound. And then for building reviews, if there's one or two trades, we're gonna automatically route them directly with a five-day turnaround to expedite those comments. And when you don't see recorded maps, a pretty quick process. And we're not doing anything with express reviews right now since it's a premium express payment service is there. But we're, we're estimating, and I ran this through Jay Davis, and they were really happy to see what we're seeing here as the first, coming out the gates as our, our first approach to codifying a process for affordable housing.
That's exciting. And yeah, I would love to, if you could email me the slide just so I can share it with my people.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. And I think, I think this is really huge too, because I think one of the things that I've noticed when we are specifically looking at affordable housing, I mean, having, being in the industry, I kind of know the pain points. You know, when we did a rezoning relatively recently, there were two relatively recently where we had to do, you know, connective streets. And Natalie, you just brought that up as well. Where I think that the, something just for the folks just to know and understand is, you know, in order to keep housing affordable, we have restricted rents. And so it doesn't make these projects particularly, you know, economically feasible. So when we have to do extra things like connecting roads, that, that sort of thing, it can be very costly. So I, just some things that I think we don't necessarily know or appreciate as a, you know, if there's a layperson, you know, on the commission, it's how some of these can impact. When we're looking at a rapidly growing city where we're looking at all housing types coming online and when we have an opportunity to see an affordable housing development that they are rare and far between. And so I just thought that I would kind of mention that as well. Jess, we had talked at one point too about, you know, prior experiences in rezonings and things to kind of keep in mind as you're going through in affordable housing. And we talk about, I think in one of your rezonings, you know, we had a caller that was concerned about concentration of poverty in certain areas. Do you want to talk a little bit about some of your experiences in developing housing and, and some of what you just kind of experienced in that, in that realm and through the planning commission?
Sure. And James, thanks for sharing all that information. We're thrilled that Kings Ridge is gonna be the pilot on this and the whole community is. That was a community funded, is a community funded project. So that's, you know, really exciting for everyone in Raleigh to be hearing. Yeah, we have, that question has come up and I, you know, have for years kind of had strong feelings about the housing location policy and is it, is it achieving the outcomes desired? But specifically, you know, we've, we can hear sometimes that that the housing location policy is, includes an exemption for housing that is either serving us special populations, like serving, I think seniors or people with disabilities. And there's also an exception if you're near transit. And so I think, you know, that, that messaging can get muddled. Are we meeting it? Are we not meeting it? And I think, you know, being clear that if, if the project falls under an exemption, then the housing location policy is being met and that, that expectation is being met. And, you know, you know, in my opinion, it really shouldn't fall on the developer to be kind of arguing about socioeconomic diversity throughout the city. You know, we're trying to meet the location policy that's provided to us by city staff that, and that's sort of a conversation that really city council and city policymakers need to be making. And it, and it often kind of falls into the neighbor developer conversation. So that's where, you know, I think that commissioners who sort of understand, hey, this is, you know, this is sort of a decided subject. It, you know, the policy's been met and, and, and sort of that's that. It's a, it's a, you know, that box has been checked off on the application. And I would say, you know, generally the I mean, one thing that just keeps popping in my head was an experience I had with a different planning commission where, you know, neighbors were kind of voicing a common NIMBY concern about crime. You know, oh, this affordable housing, we're worried about crime. And the commissioners were like, you know, strike that comment from the record. We're not here to talk about that. This housing is affordable. There's, you know, no connection between, you know, whatever assumptions you're making about the people who might live there. And I hadn't seen that before, that the commissioners really sort of like dismissed that comment from a member of the public. But I found it really heartening and it sort of did set the tone of like, we're here to discuss the subjects at hand, which are land use decisions and not get into kind of operational concerns or exactly, you know, the, you know, all of that stuff about who's living there that is, you know, in my opinion, kind of outside the scope of the land use decision being made at a rezoning. Does that answer, address your, what you're looking for, Jennifer?
Yeah. And I think too, what, what we are often finding ourselves in the middle of is that conversation that you're just describing is policy versus, you know, community engagement. And I think to Commissioner Bennett's comments earlier about the efforts that go into the community engagement process so that, you know, kind of conditions or any of those factors can be brought into the conversation. You know, we all agree that, you know, the, the crime conversation is a left field conversation that's often, you know, misused, you know, to support various views. So I think that that's appreciated, that we're all on that same page. But at the same time, I think, you know, some things just to make a community aware of a development and have those conversations. I think Natalie, as we described earlier, you know, that some of the, you know, for, for good or for bad, I think the CACs provided a value, but in some cases too, there, there were some complications of that as well in terms of how many times you'd have to go through meetings and was it a, a stalling, you know, or, you know, whatever, you know, initiative there was there. But there's, that community engagement still should not be, you know, overlooked, that it should still be part of the process. So I just want to make sure, I'll just touch base with commissioners if they have any questions. Commissioner Bennett?
Yes. I agree that it's sometimes the conversations definitely go left and we find ourselves addressing much larger planning issues. However, as one who is deeply rooted in equity, as you all know, it kind of bothers me when we are reminded that this, it's land use. We're talking about the land use. We're not talking about this other stuff. Yes, but no, because it's a much bigger picture. We are talking about the other stuff because the land use decisions affect people's quality of life. The land use decisions affect equity. And it certainly does go back to policy. I mean, the developer doesn't write the policy. The planning commission doesn't write the policy. But i- if the policy is grounded in inequity and we're just, well, we gotta be consistent with the policy. I'm one that believes that sometimes you have to speak up and have a disruption. And sometimes you have to say, I understand that you're not responsible for that policy, but what you're doing is perpetuating this inequity in the city. And I am gonna say something about it. And I might vote against that rezoning. And that's maybe isn't fair to you. But at some point, if we don't disrupt the status quo, we keep the status quo. So I think, for example, the fact that we have spoken up about equity many times, and now the city is looking at doing a racial equity audit of the comp plan. Things like that happen. And then so maybe in the future, we'll get revisions to the comprehensive plan that will address some of these things. And then we won't have to have some of the discussions that we're having and sending the applicants back and, and, you know, lengthening the time and costing the money. But I do think while the, the applicant may be focused, this is an affordable housing development, which is great. I love to see them come because as Jennifer said, we see them so rarely. You may be focused on one thing, but at least for me as a planning commissioner, I'm trying to look more holistically. And I'm not trying to make anybody's process more difficult, but I am trying to think about this is one rezoning. I know I'm looking at this one rezoning. This developer isn't responsible for this entire section of town. But as a planning commissioner, I'm thinking about if we have 10 of these, what does this do for this development pattern? You know what I'm saying? And if we see the affordable housing developments going all the time in a certain part of town, I'm not saying that they are, but I'm saying if they do, then that can lead to some larger issues and concentrations of poverty, which do lead to other things that, you know, as planners, that it, it is adverse to people's livability. So sometimes I am guilty. I am one of those people that will bring up some of the bigger picture issues, but that's because I think we have to look at them because the land use affects a lot of other, a lot of other decisions and a lot of outcomes, I should say.
I think to that as well, like we are in an environment that is changing aggressively in such meaningful ways, right? That my comment earlier about how the planning department is, is going about making all these rapid changes and how responsive we are. I'm, I'm proud of that in the city. And I think a lot of that, but frankly Nicole too, is a lot of, you know, the conversations that are being had on the planning commission that you've brought to the table on a number of occasions. And I think what this highlights here is that needle that we have to thread where, you know, these organizations are providing the housing and then they're like looking at a book of policy and, and having to, to kind of narrow in the, the providing the goods and the services and the support to the community and then having to like go through that policy and thread that needle and meet all of those ticking and tying requirements. And I will say that in the affordable housing world, the collaboration that occurs just to get something like this out there. And I will say too, to your point about a number of, you know, if, if we see a number of, of affordable housing developments coming through, I will say that not all of them get developed. We had another conversation too about the, we, in a previous planning commission, strategic planning committee, we talked about the 9% tax credit program and the competitive nature of that and how few 9% tax credits, meaning new construction development typically, you know, that, that are afforded within a high density city living because of the land costs, because of the timing. Having a project that is under an option contract for 18 months just to get financing, there's a lot of developers and owners that absorb those costs. And I think that's the challenge that we're all seeing is having to thread this needle of all these requirements that are having to be ticked and tied, but then also providing a service. And I think what we see sometimes too is like multifamily, traditional multifamily or traditional single family that kind of has such less constraints on it because of the, you know, the programs that, you know, CASA and DHIC and all, you know, Families Together are restricted by in the financing platform. I, that was kind of a really long convoluted answer, but I think that that's kind of where a lot of the troubles and, you know, kind of the nature of providing this housing. I'll bring it to, if, if there's any additional questions, we can address them now, but I was thinking about too, bringing in kind of Eric, some of Erica's perspective. So Erica works with a lot of municipalities in providing guidance for, you know, supporting housing, supporting new opportunities. You know, as part of this, it's, you know, that, that roundtable discussion and having, you know, questions like these being addressed. What are some of the things that you're seeing Erica in other communities that, you know, where there are some ideas here that we could start applying?
So I'll say I'm really excited about the proposals that we saw. I think a lot of those are similar places that are doing it very well and have looked, you know, deeply at their review process. One thing that I think is worth considering is when you're thinking about creating more housing overall, right, which is good. I'm thinking about missing middle housing, right? And how does that fit in here? You know, it might not be considered affordable all the time, but it is more housing. And are there opportunities at least to support less professional developers who might be building this type of housing, giving them some more resources? I know, you know, I was just on a call earlier about the accessory dwelling unit process in Durham. And, you know, they did a lot with their expanding housing choices, much like a lot of the changes you guys tried to do too. And, you know, they're still having challenges with people understanding the development review process. So just trying to make that more transparent, I think, would be helpful. And thinking about whether there might be ways to support some maybe not like super expedited, but just thinking about ways that you might be able to support missing middle housing, you know, reducing fees or something like that. Having somebody, an ambassador to help lead them through the process was kind of the main thing I was thinking, but it's very different than the type of housing development, obviously, that other folks on this call specialize in.
Thank you. Mac and Jennifer, I think you guys had worked on some projects as well that were part of more of the review. I'm sure that this information here has been helpful in terms of understanding some of that. I don't know if you have any just general kind of feedback or thoughts? You know, bringing it back to Roberta's comments about conditions and Nicole's comments about engaging the community. Do you have any thoughts on, on this process here and kind of things that you've experienced?
Who's going first?
Go ahead.
All right. So hi, my name is Jennifer Paul and I am with Families Together and appreciate you all having me here today. Just quick background about our organization. So we're not really an affordable housing developer. Our historic role in the community has to been to provide services to families experiencing homelessness and moving them into permanent housing in the community. And it was a few years ago that we started to embark on a path of owning property because of all the external factors that are making it so hard to find housing for extremely low income families at market rate. So we did start to purchase some more scatter site properties. And we've been doing that. And, and so one of the things I just want to mention here is that often what we're doing is acquiring naturally occurring affordable housing that is in, has a lot of unique situations that come with it. Some of them are rundown. Some of them have right-of-way issues. Some may need subdividing. And each one is unique. And as newbies in this space, it can be really challenging for us. We do not have a, a development staff or real estate staff. We have been working with people in the community, we're volunteering and providing their expertise. So they've been helping us a lot through kind of navigating these challenges. But, you know, just to want to say that the presentation from James was really, you know, kind of music to our ears, I think, to hear that it would be more efficient and more easier to understand. A faster process. Those are all things that are, would be really helpful to us. Another challenge is that we, we do own two quads and we, you know, some, we work in a space of the homeless services, continuum of care. And there's terminology used there that sometimes doesn't align with the, the U D O. And so that's something I'm learning. Maybe Matt can speak more specifically to the technicalities that we, we were facing there. But we did find a solution, but it was partly because the use that we have for the property doesn't align with the U D O. And so it was looking like we may have to rezone. But we Matt, do you want to talk a little about that? You're here.
He's still, he's on mute. Might have, I know he has a, he has an event that he is preparing as well. So maybe he had to step off for a moment.
Okay. Yeah, it was just that we were, we had actually had the funding from the city or have been awarded to expand. Oh, there he is. Matt, you want to talk about it?
Well, there we go. Yeah, I mean, and this kind of goes to the point about the condition, because there was a zoning condition on this particular property that limited the density that would otherwise have allowed them to avoid rezoning. So they were looking at just doing a text amendment, which I think they're going to have to do to, to add some affordable units. But in going in for the pre-submitting meeting and describing to, to the intake folks what was going on. Staff viewed it as an emergency shelter and that was not permissible in that zoning district. So that led to a conversation about rezoning to some very intense zoning district. But after some conversations, getting folks in evolved, it was clear that this was no different from any other multi-unit housing. It's just that Families Together provides some services along with it, but it has all of the characteristics of any other housing. So it was just, I think it's an example where some of the providers are not, you know, in the business of developing real estate and they don't always have the same level of support that even the affordable housing developers who are very sophisticated like DHIC and others on the call. And they're all, and as Jennifer said, they're often dealing in more marginal areas of the city where properties become available or just given to them. And they have some unique issues like another situation where there had been some condemnation of the frontage of the property. So the owner just said, well, we'll just give it to an affordable housing developer. And then that had a lot of issues with it just to get the permits to re, re inhabit the property. And I, I mean, Jennifer Ladman, if I could add a couple of things that I mean, just from listening to the conversation, I mean, it's been really constructive. But first thanking James, because you saw his chart. I mean, there's so much going on with development that is outside the bounds of like the zoning process. And often I'll get calls in the site plan or site permit review and there's some crisis. And the staff has been very, very responsive when, whenever they know it's an affordable housing project. They, they seem to jump on it with a lot of responsiveness and that's appreciated. All I would say is like, some of the things that the planning commission and city council has done to look at new ways to, like the missing middle and the bonus for density, or those are just examples where someone might be able to avoid a step that they otherwise would have had to take to rezone in, when they're providing neither more housing or affordable housing and the density bonus. I'm skeptical that may, you know, many people are going to take advantage of it, but that's an example of you know, going down the right path, I think of just creating a way to avoid some, some steps that make, make it difficult. The other thing, you know, Nicole was talking about, you know, it's, it's not just about land use and that's absolutely true. I mean, there are all these implications and policies and, and issues like equity. And I would just say, like with the scattered site, I think the more certainty that we can have around concepts like equity. So that like, we don't want to concentrate all housing in certain areas, but, and we have the scattered site policy. Twenty-five years ago, it was very difficult to get affordable housing approved in North Raleigh, for example. You know, they would just steer clear of it because of the political pushback. And I think the climate has changed a lot. But it's like, you know, finding that balance, because I think the planning commission has been very supportive when affordable housing projects have come before you. And even the public, I think, is more sensitive than they may have been ten, fifteen years ago in expressing views about it. You know, they, they may voice their concerns more about traffic and stormwater and other things. But, you know, I just think it's helpful to have clear, as much clarity as possible around the way we apply policies. So that, you know, folks who are trying to produce more housing know the terrain they're dealing with and are not going to be more reluctant to try to produce projects in Raleigh. And, and a lot of these things, it's a, it's a fast moving area. I mean, the, the conversation around housing has accelerated incredibly in five years. And the, the things y'all have been dealing with are just, you know, significantly higher volume than they were just a few years ago.
And in those barriers, I think a lot of those walls that were initially up. And again, Nicole, a lot of the conversations that have been having here over the past couple of years, I think, help reduce those barriers to entry and make it easier to bring housing for, for all types. So it, I, I find, again, all of this information here, and James, thank you for your presentation. Because I think everybody here have heard how much effort the city is putting into helping reduce these barriers. Any closing questions from my fellow commissioners or any thoughts or parting thoughts or anything? And in that too, keep in mind that the strategic planning committee has opportunities for digging into many more topics. And then next one in January, we're going to be speaking with, I guess, hopefully we'll be connecting with the chief of police and having that, the crime conversation that has come up a couple of times, just in, you know, in some of our reviews. So that'll, that we'll be looking forward to as well. Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who came and took the time. This has been helpful. And I certainly appreciate all the work you do and I look forward to seeing cases coming from nonprofit housing providers. So I understand it's challenging and so I really appreciate what you do and taking the time to come talk to us today. So thank you.
Well, everyone, thank you. This was a big panelist day. Thank you. I really do appreciate everyone's participation and contribution and thoughts. And you guys do this every day. And so thank you very much. Really appreciate it. And in that, if there are no other questions or comments, I appreciate it. And we will see you again next time. Thank you all.
Take care.
Thanks, everybody.